Welcome you to the August 13th board meeting. If I could please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Bangor, if we can have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Britton?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. De Show?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Emick?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Eifert? Mr. Rohhauser?
Here.
Seven members are present and one is on the phone.
Okay, thank you. Communications, do we have anything not listed for communications? All right, if not, we'll move on to presentations and celebrations. Mr. Stefanovic?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to thank Amy Alman again for getting me transferred from Thursday's agenda to this one. I really appreciate it. I had a conflict on Thursday and I didn't want to miss again. I have a couple of things to go over here. I did count the building permits in June and there were 61, which is an awful lot. I don't have the July count yet because our meeting is not for another week yet. There were quite a few homes on there and I've mentioned in the past some solar again and all kinds of other things, but the volume is up, which is good for all of us. The, I got a couple of updates here and probably most of us are aware of these, but the Columbia Gas Project that's out on Canal, which hopefully is not going to bother bus traffic, but I know we're pushing to try to get them to complete it. The biggest thing is the homes themselves are not connected, is what we understand. So, a lot of the main work in the streets are done, but the laterals into the homes have to be completed yet. In the past, I had mentioned about the wastewater treatment plant. This summer is much better than last for them because of the lack of rain or just less rain. There is one thing I wanted to mention. It's sort of funny, but not funny type thing. If, I don't know who's heard about this, but there's a product out there called Flushable Wipes. Okay, that's why I say this is a little corny, but what happened at our wastewater treatment plant is they are not biodegradable. They don't fall apart. They actually attach to themselves somehow because of the process that goes through in the plant. And it actually got to a magnitude that it damaged some really expensive equipment in about six weeks ago. So, our plant manager did a really good job and he handled it very well. He did put a little something out on the media suggesting that, you know, to look at what you're using and dispose of it properly. He got a little backlash from the wrong people, you can imagine, but Tony's his name and he kept at it and hopefully we're going to try to get the word out there because it is sort of corny, but it was very expensive. So, trying to keep expenses down is one of the big things that I know he's trying to do for all of us. Let's see, the former Terra Vista project, which is now called Dover Run, they're working with PennDOT to get it complete, to get their permits and everything, and they are hoping, if you're involved in that area, that that would be done in early September. Chuck is a little concerned that may interfere with busing a little bit, but I know we're all going to watch that and try to keep things like that to a minimum. As of right now, I asked Laurel this morning. Her comment is that all of our 2019 road projects are done in the township as of this week. So, that should help out a lot. And we do have a few pipe replacements, if you're not aware of, or see the barrels along the bridges down on Fox Run and other places. Some of the pipe under the roads is giving us some problems, so they're working on the oldest ones first. But we're hoping that they don't affect busing at all. We have begun our 2020 budget and Chuck and Laurel have begun to discuss trying to assist or fund the intermediate avenue projects that we're both looking at. Because that project, the Dover Highlands, we haven't seen a plan for it yet, but we know that they are working pretty hard right now. Their engineer on getting a submittal ready. So, that is something that might be coming at both of us a little bit in the next month or two. So, I believe there's been some contact about the cross-country team using the park area again, which is no problem. I know Laurel and everybody's in favor of that. We have had our share of delays this summer with DEP on some of our projects that have to do with sewer pipes and that, and that is one in that area. So, if there is any conflict that would come up, I'm sure Laurel will contact people way ahead of time.
Yeah, they talked today.
Oh, you did, very good, very good.
Yeah, yeah, talked today.
We've been talking to DEP and hopefully are getting through some of the waiting lists and everything else that are out there to get our jobs done. So, that's that area. Our other sewer projects that we're working on, they call it the Palomino One. It's the one that goes down past Max Ice Cream and underneath Route 30 there at Thornton. This is sort of a little funny again, but not funny. There's been a problem that cropped up last spring with bog turtles. Somebody claimed that there could be bog turtles in that shallow area up through there. And of course, the appropriate departments got wind of this and stopped everything we were doing. So, we were able to come down to the top of that property and that has finally, it seems like it's every, it just goes on and on and on, but I believe that is finally done. So, we will see that project complete, which actually helps us here because the flow is that way. And we're going from like a 12-inch pipe, I think, to like a 24-inch pipe or something to try to keep up and replace old pipes. So, that one's moving along. There is a, if you're not familiar, there is a joint interceptor project that affects us all. It's the pipes going into the plant. Those pipes are going from like a three-foot pipe to a five-and-a-half-foot pipe to account for the volume that comes at us, both with freshwater and with just adding onto our sewer system. So, those are all, that's another one that was held up some, but all of a sudden, these things seem to be getting released here towards the end of the summer. So, we're hoping we can move on. The holdup though, with the Eagle Park going down through behind the school and over in through the, is possibly at the point that we're not going to be able to do the flood restoration this fall into winter. So, we are pushing really hard. I'm not one to say that we can't get it done yet. I'm more optimistic and hopefully we can, but right now with all the delays that we've had from DEP and everybody else, we're coming up against a window that we may not be able to fight. So, they can't do that kind of work in the frozen winter weather. So, that's about what I had. If there's any questions or anything else, I can answer.
Couple of questions related to the building projects that are going on. You said Terra Vista, which is Dover Run. You're talking about the one there, it's Long Davidson.
Davidson, right.
At Meyer?
Yeah, that's correct.
There's 12, if I remember right, 12 buildings being constructed on that site? Does that sound right?
I don't know the exact number. You could be right, though. Yes, there were quite a few permits issued.
That's how many permits I've seen come through.
Pardon?
That's how many permits I've seen come through.
You've seen come through.
You said that would be completed in September. That's nowhere close to being.
The PennDOT work into that is supposed to be. So, the road, anything that affects the road, they're hoping will be done by the end of September timeframe.
Is that going to connect with that neighborhood behind it?
Yes, it is. That's the plan.
I thought that was the case, but.
Yes, there was a small piece of property in between and the gentleman agreed to give it, or yeah. I think we purchased it just like normal and the road will be going through that other development. And there will also be an emergency exit out of that development. That won't be an open road, but will be available for the fire and police.
I also saw a Facebook post from Seth Grove that the Lidl store that was proposed to come in there at Hilton is now moving forward, that they had received some government grant, I believe, to help with that construction. I'm assuming that's correct information?
I would assume. I didn't hear that one yet. I've been in contact with that individual and he claimed that once the store in at the college opened, then our store would be the next one.
Which begged the question, since the property on the adjacent side of Hilton there is being held up by a right-in, right-out, there is a current or was a current right-in and right-out on the property as it stands now, so I'm not sure how PennDOT will view that.
The property for the old store with its access to 74 is good. They will not take that away.
Okay.
Okay, but the one on the other side of Hilton is one that is in a real difficult situation right now. I guess that's the best way to put it. So, they're, you know, we don't know from a township standpoint if there's a whole lot we can do because it has to do with 74. The Hilton side is okay, but yes, that little thing, that little development there was hoping to get a right-in, right-out off of 74 and PennDOT just keeps fighting the issue, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. Anybody else?
Thanks, sir, as always.
All right, thank you.
With that, we'll come to our first public comment period. It's a three-minute public comment for item of honor off the agenda. Seeing no one moving forward, we'll move on. Board presence, communication. I have nothing. We did not have an executive session this evening. Moving on, approval of minutes. Like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 16th, 2019 board meeting.
Shall we move?
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any comments? Mrs. Bangor. Motion carries. Moving on, consent agenda. Like to entertain a motion to approve all items listed under the consent agenda.
Shall we move?
Second.
A first and a second.
Any questions?
If it would be okay, I'd like to go over a couple of the items, just to kind of give a little bit of explanation. And if I skip any, just let me know, okay? So, 7.03 and 7.04 have to do with a foreign exchange student that is coming to our high school this school year. It's been a couple of years since the high school's had a foreign exchange student and our policy is really kind of old on this. And one of the things in the policy, well, the first one, 7.03 is for the board to accept a foreign exchange student coming to the high school. But the second one is a policy that explains the process for getting a student, exchange student, and it also basically says in there that the host family is required to pay off fees. Well, and this is a rotary exchange student and how they do it now is the child goes to three separate families during the school year, so they spend a couple of months with each family in Dover. I think they're still looking for a third family, if anybody's interested in having a high school soccer player stay with them. So, all of these fees, so the two fees I'm asking the board to consider waiving is the activity fee, which is the fee for them to play athletics, and the technology fee. Both of these fees really are not lost money to us. It's just kind of a goodwill thing. With checking with other school districts, this is something they do. I don't feel comfortable doing it. It does go against our policy, so I am asking the board to do that. I felt those two fees fall on the first family. And when the child goes to the next other families, the first family that has the child had to pay for them. They also requested to have lunch fees waived. We cannot do that, all right? We are not allowed to do that. So, that is 703 and 704 to exchange students. Any questions about that?
Is there any other circumstances where we would entertain that notion to waive fees from, and out? I mean, is it, it's kind of setting precedent there. I was just wondering, is there any other situations that could arise that because we do this for this situation, we may be asked to do it?
I think the, first, the policy is about 18 years old, so I think we do need to review it and really take the time to see what other districts do. I think it's, I think it's a good thing to do and it might be worth putting in policy. But other than that, no. We have, you know, if a child is from a low-income family, we waive the fees. If they're homeless, we waive the fees. If they have some sort of terrible situation, we can waive the fees. So, I don't, I don't, I can't think of any other situation that would bring a student here that we would do that. So, okay. 711 is our Tech Link Consortium MOU. That is through HAC. That is something Mr. Betten gets around for us every year. This is for training for our staff and teachers and it's a bunch of CTCs in the area that get together to do it. Policy 712, 712, policy 216. This is a PSBA-recommended policy we just received. We are asking the board to accept the policy as it's PSBA-written and approved because it is going to allow us to do some things with our media release form and some forms we're sending out next week, and that's why we're bringing it to you so quickly. When we do get to the 200s, we will review it again, but it is a policy that is completely vetted by PSBA. I've read it and we're very comfortable with it. 7.13 is our extracurricular list that we get board-approved every year. Those are coaches and those are club advisors, so again, we're going to ask you to approve that. 7.14 is our LIU Fair Share Agreement. This should be a yearly agreement. It has been, it's taken the IU a couple of years to kind of finish this, but this is an agreement with our special ed classes that are housed in our building. Each district takes their fair share turn to house these classes. And in the agreement, it pretty much discusses, you know, who is giving the teacher technology? Because remember, they're the IU teachers. Who is giving them technology? If an iPad is broken, who's paying for that? If we have an early dismissal, do their kids leave? So, it really just kind of says what are the rules for IU classes in our buildings. 715 is our audit engagement letter with Boyer and Ritter, which we have started. We, the auditors, have been in the last couple of weeks. 716 JP Harris Agreement. This is a collections of delinquent account agreement. We are seeing a couple of our, a number of our accounts where parents aren't paying for, say, school lunch or our technology fees, or we have damaged technology. And right now, it falls upon us to track the parent down and send letters. And the way this agreement is set up, they add their fee on top of our cost. So, we are really recommending that the board consider this. We think this will be very good for us to collect some of our fees. And the last one under the consent agenda that I have, 718 Bills Paid. There's one particular bill in there, I just wanted to point this out. There's a bill, Traveler's Insurance. Mr. Cook's name is tied to it, so we don't want to think there's anything funny going on here, but it's to have him be bonded by our insurance company because he is the treasurer, okay? So, I just wanted to point those out. Any questions on any other items?
Just a question on 716, the collection service agreement. Have we stipulated with them the tenor of any letters, phone calls, et cetera, that are going out to them?
We have not had those discussions yet, however, please know that if they get to JP, it's a pretty rigorous process for us to get them there. There would be multiple collection efforts on our part prior to them getting to that point. So, if they're getting to that point, they're not returning any of our phone calls. They're just blatantly disregarding our collection effort. We go through a process that we talk with our counselors and see if there's any reason why the family may not be able to afford the fee, things like that. So, we can have those conversations with them, but to get there, we've exhausted every effort that we have on our side. We're seeing a lot of, you know, if it was intentional breakage of an iPad and the parents refused to pay it, but they didn't pay the insurance fee of, you know, originally. Parents that may just not be paying lunch account, thinking they don't have to pay. Maybe tuition reimbursement that we have to get back because of an employee leaving, things like that.
With those accounts, I know we've talked at length in the past, probably a year and a half, about lunch accounts and with being required to provide a meal for the students, there's been a number of times where we've had donations that were made and it's great to have those. It's a way for our community to connect and feed a child, basically. Is that something we could think to include maybe in future newsletters or put on the website as a, as an opportunity for our community to connect with our kids? Since there are obviously situations that come up with.
There are, but I think what's hard is we also have times where families have a fire. We also have times where families, I know Kirsten is dealing with a number of things, so I'm not sure how we would do that. We've talked about it. We have so many family members who want to help and one of the things Kirsten and I are doing in the fall, hopefully, is we're meeting with someone from the township and someone from the borough who are involved with all of our nonprofits in Dover, and there are a ton. They want to help, so we, I think we need a coordinated effort of how, how does it look? What does it look like? I think we definitely can do that, just we aren't sure what that looks like yet. But we are, she, so we had so much food donated to our summer program this summer for our kids that we didn't have enough kids to give the food to. I mean, that's, so we get the food bank, but that's wonderful. Yeah, isn't that wonderful? So, we need to have a real coordinated effort with the community and that's one of the things on, I think we already have a meeting set up in September, so, yeah.
Any other questions?
On the Bills Paid, I know you did address it through an email, but just kind of wanted to follow up on that. The Skyward charges that we had that were on this month's bill, is that exhaustive of the year? Like, is that a one-time per year charge and is that a repeated charge every year?
So, the majority of them are. So, there was probably, I don't know, maybe four or five different charges on there. One is the annual payment for our food service enrollment database, our student information system, IEP writer, and that was $38,000 combined. And then also, there is, there was a annual agreement for fee tracking. Some of that is implementation also, it was $2,900. Some of it is implementation, but just a little bit of it because we started implementing it last fiscal year. So, this includes maybe a couple hundred of implementation fees, but then it'll be going forward with that cost. Financial, our financial system, True Time, our accounts receivable system that we use for billing and fixed assets was about $18,575. And if you remember, when we were switching to Skyward, we thought we would see a savings on that after the initial year or two of implementation. And so, right now, we're back to that. We're seeing savings of about $7,000 compared to CSIU, what they were at whenever we switched. So, that's even a couple of years ago. And then there was an annual renewal for our Skylert messages and that system, how we get, the parents get emails and text messages and all of the phone calls that we can do. So, that's an annual renewal also. And then Fast Track, and that was about $10,000. Some of that included an implementation fee and that's going to replace our AppleTrack system, which is our applicant tracking system where people go online to apply for jobs and things like that. That $10,000 did include the implementation fee. We'll be implementing that through this year and then next year, we'll see the savings over the cost of AppleTrack also.
Thank you for, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, Mrs. Bangor, can you have a vote?
Mrs. Britton, are you still there?
It's from here, it just popped up.
Oh, okay, I see your vote now.
I must be lagging. No, it just popped up, sorry.
Thank you.
And the motion passes. Moving on, human and fiscal resources, nothing listed. Anybody have anything under human and fiscal resource? If not, moving on. Capital Projects Steering Committee. We have three change orders. We'll take a look at each of those individually. And do we want to have Dave, Mr. Nelson, up here and take a look at us here real quick? Yeah, we're not happy. These are additions too, so, just saying.
Okay, I get it, leave me. I fight them.
Okay, the first one for, that you have for Myco Mechanical up there is, they didn't have backwater valves on the, they didn't specify backwater valves on the condensate drains coming off of air handlers. So, the problem with that is we had the same issue at the high school. If for some reason your stormwater backs up, it backs up into your condensers in your air handlers and comes out in your classrooms. So, the simple solution is put a backwater valve on them and that stops that. So, it was, I can't remember the correct number off the top of my head. I think it was seven locations where they missed them on the print. So, this would be to add those seven backwater valves for 2046-19.
Any questions for Mr. Nelson on this one? If not, like to entertain a motion to approve change order number one for Myco Mechanical Incorporated in the amount of $2,046.19. Have a first and a second. Comments or questions?
I have a question, just a simple question, Dave. So, when something like this happens with these valves, did we, was there something that happened over the site that they realized it, or do they just all of a sudden go, oh gee, who is?
When they're reviewing the prints, they find it. When we're doing our coordination drawings, it comes up that someone will say, well, you really should have a backwater valve here. And that could come from either us or maybe the architect find it or found it or the engineer. The architects, Crabtree Roarball doesn't do this. This is an engineering firm that's part of the project, so.
Just curious.
This is the first plumbing change order so far, and we have about 60% of the plumbing done. So, it's really not, it's not, it's not bad, really.
Any other questions? And motion passes. Second one, York Excavating Company LLC.
Okay, York Ex, this one is for, it's actually a two-part. First change was actually our main water line that comes from Intermediate Avenue all the way to school. It's about 570. It's about five hundred and seventy-five feet long. When we, they did their calculations early on, they factored in. They thought the four-inch line was going to be large enough. And then when we sent this, when we started doing the sprinkler drawings and it went to the fire marshal, they wanted a larger line for more flow. So, we had to go from a four-inch to a six-inch. So, even though we think four-inch would have been fine, the fire marshal, when he reviewed it, said he wanted a six-inch line. So, this is, the eighteen thou, it's actually eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy cents. It's for the increase in pipe size or a meter pit, which if you don't know what a meter pit is, it's a big concrete box. It's about eight feet long and about six feet wide and about ten feet deep. And inside that box, you have your water meter, your shut-off valves, your backflow valves, your bypass valves, all that's included. So, all that had to be increased to six inch and the box had to be bigger, as well as any fittings that you had. So, that's the first part of that one. The second part of that one is foundation drain. We had to go deeper on the foundation drain than what was anticipated. And we had to go wider because we had to go deeper. So, whenever you get in to a certain depth of dirt, you have to make it wider so the person that's in the hole doesn't become entrapped or something. So, that was, that was that change. It was actually four different drain, foundation drains that go from underneath the building out towards the wetlands. And that was for eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Totaled together, they're twenty-four fifty-four sixty-six.
Any questions on this one? I'm sorry, did we, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the change order number seven for York Excavating Company LLC in the amount of twenty thousand, four fifty-four sixty-six.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Now, any comments or questions? Seeing none, go ahead. And motions approved. Okay, so, change order number three.
Two.
Well, change order number two, excuse me.
So, this is also a two-part change order. This is only the second one we've gotten for electrical. So, that's pretty good also when you come right down to it. First part of this was for three thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents. Again, when we went out to get our fire system reviewed by the fire marshal, he requested additional fire alarm devices throughout the building. We currently met code, but he'd like us to have more of them in. So, you know, of course, we're going to do what he'd like, you know. We're talking about kids here. So, if he thinks it's necessary, that's what we're going to do. So, we're going to put some additional ones in. I can't recall off the top of my head how many it is. But, that's the first part of it. And then the second part for thirty-five hundred, seventy-seven, ninety-two, ninety-two. Can't get far enough away. Is for a feed to the grinder pump. This was something that we knew early on it was missed. We were trying to work around it since pretty much the inception of the project. When they did, the electrical engineer somehow missed the electrical feed to feed the grinder pump, which is, grinds all our stuff up that goes to the sewer. So, we have to run a line out to that. It's about four hundred feet from the building. So, it's a pretty good distance to run. So, they'll have to, have to dig a trench and put a pipe in and put some wire in it and controls and stuff. So, this comes out to six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents for this total.
To entertain a motion.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any questions for Mr. Nelson on this one? I do have one, Mr. Nelson. The fire alarm devices, what types of devices was he looking for? Were it like smoke alarms or?
He wants, it's a combination. It was some smoke alarms, some additional pull stations, and some enunciators. So, it's a combination, so.
Any other questions? If not, then vote. And the motion has been.
Mr. Nelson, I do have a question, Mr. President. Where are we at with the cumulative total with the change orders now?
Just going to put that in.
All right.
Okay, so, we went from having a, being ahead of the game with this round of change orders. We are, we have now spent an additional twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and fourteen cents.
In the original specs, there was money that was allocated for.
We had a.
It's in our.
I think it's a million something.
One point two million for contingency.
We had one point two million allocated for change orders. We're about, give or take sixty percent done on a fifty-eight million dollar project. And we're twenty-five thousand dollars. This is kind of unheard of. Kind of unheard of, so. I will caution you when we start to do the high school, it's going to be more change order. I will caution you there, conversion to a middle school. Only because it's, there's much more, many more unknowns within existing building that you don't know till you remove a wall or you dig a hole or you don't know where it's at. You don't know if something's in there or something that's supposed to be there, isn't. So, but we'll do the best we can. Anything else?
Nelson have anything? All right, thank you. All right, moving along. The Eagle Foundation. Mrs. Crean, meeting?
Actually, Jim was at the meeting.
Okay.
So, a meeting of the Eagle Foundation was held last week. They had a great meeting, talking about some fundraising efforts to start to fund some scholarships and some teacher grants and things like that to build up their reserves a little bit also. They are planning their first annual event, which will be a bingo in the spring, hopefully in March of two thousand and nineteen. It will be the planning event for a bigger bingo event, hopefully with some auction items then as part of homecoming activities in October of two thousand and twenty. So, they're excited about that. That's about it.
Any questions for Ms. Banjos? If not, York Adams Academy, Mr. Anning.
No report.
Okay, thank you. York County School of Technology, we did not have a meeting due to a lack of a quorum. So, we will try, I believe, again next week. Moving along, LIU Special Education, Mrs. Crean, Mrs. Banjo.
I met with Dr. West, the new executive director, about two weeks ago to discuss Dover and our specific needs. He was great and he really was willing to listen to our concerns. He's made a lot of changes, which is really good. And one of the biggest change that happened is shortly after that, I received a letter from him reporting that the LIU had misreported transportation data to PDE about two years ago over the course of two months. And what that's done is that's kind of snowballed as the time went on. So, they are bringing in an auditor. They are auditing three or four complete years. And that will go back to PDE. So, we're going to be very interested to see what that outcome is. And then also, they did meet on August sixth and they appointed Dr. Bruce Sensenig as the interim executive director at six hundred dollars per day. Just wanted to share that.
Any questions? Legislative, Mr. Rollhauser.
No report on anything, all right.
Okay, quick and easy. And York Learning Center neither, that one neither?
What?
And nothing for York Learning Center either?
No, we didn't meet.
Okay, all right. PSBA representative, Mrs. Britton.
The big thing that PSBA, it's been pretty quiet since the passage of the budget. Recently, though, the governor announced Charter School Reform Package. So, there was a news release that PSBA issued in support of the governor's actions, which emphasized the association's long-supported efforts to promote a level playing field between charter schools and traditional public schools and enact needed funding reform. So, that's probably something that we'll keep our eye on as things progress when they return in September. But, that's it.
Any question for Mrs. Britton? Dover Industrial Development Committee.
July meeting was canceled.
Okay, a lot of that going on. And superintendent's report.
Okay, so, yeah, we are a little busy right now. We are in the middle of our opening week activities. First, I'd like to do a shout-out to all of our district employees who worked so hard this summer and who have gotten us ready for the school year. iPad rollout went very well for the first year using an online form. So, that was great. Our summer food service was very, very good. Helen did such a great job with that. And she's all school-ready with everyone who wants food from her right now for their meetings. Our building administration and our academic team leaders have done a great job planning trainings for our new, for staff, new staff, returning staff. And of course, our custodian and maintenance department. We took a tour yesterday and today around every single building. The buildings are clean and shiny and smell good and it's just, it's fun. It was really good. Last week, we had three days induction. Dr. Maloney, eleven new teachers? Okay?
No, not eleven, there were, there are.
People.
Yeah, there were nine at the training.
People, right. Okay, so, we have some teachers, we're still hiring teachers yet. It's kind of tough out there, but it was a great three days for them. This week on Monday, teachers had the option to do some online training with the teacher evaluation and not come into school on Monday. And that went really, really well. I think we only had about ten, eleven, twelve teachers who came into the building. But, that gave them another day and the training was terrific. On Tuesday, today, Elementary School, the entire elementary staff was at North Salem doing elementary responsive classroom, gearing up again for that. So, we're very excited. Both IS and High School did some PBIS and behavior work. Tomorrow, we have professional development again all over the place. The elementary and the intermediate school are having opening faculty meetings, department meetings, team meetings. And our high school, Mr. Benton has organized with the York County Economic Alliance a tour of all high school teachers of four local York County businesses, major businesses. Do you, I looked for, to say them, can you know who they are?
The Cooplin Corporation, Jacobus, you have OSS Health, you have First Family Health, you have the Kinsley Corporation, Martin's Potatoes. Off the top of my head, I can't forget, I forgot the last.
That's fine.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I can see this one, yeah.
There we go. Our goal is for our teachers to begin to really understand the economic opportunities our kids have in York County. And to also kind of connect their content with a job. So, with whatever they teach, how does that translate into a job in our county? So, York County Economic Alliance, I know will do a great job with them. I think the teachers are excited about this. We're putting them on buses at about eight o'clock and taking them everywhere. Anything you want to add to that, Chuck?
Yeah, we will have some special guests with us, probably about a quarter of eight. Some local representatives, if anyone's available, you can please stop by.
Auditorium.
See faculty, yeah, and auditorium at the high school. Actually, the Cooplin Corporation, Jacobus and Kinsley has opened up their rooms where they do education. That's where our staff will have box lunches that Helen has provided for them. For this, so, it's going to be a good day and everyone should be back by two-thirty in the afternoon.
So, we're very excited. And then on Thursday is our kickoff. It's our opening day. And please, I just earlier today sent you all an agenda for the day. It is the one day the entire staff gets together. We are excited because our theme this year is truly diversity and unity to really look at how we are different, how we are the same. Quay Hannah is a speaker that we had in the district eight, nine years ago who talks about diversity and unity and is coming back. So, he's going to speak. And then we have students who are going to welcome us back. The Intermediate School of Veedham Club is going to do a presentation and it is really powerful. I'll tell, when I saw it, I thought, every teacher has to see this, it's awesome. And then Live Elementary School, Sarah Robbins, those kiddos did such a beautiful job with their spring concert. And they really do represent Dover and our diversity. So, we're very excited about that. We, of course, do staff celebrations. We celebrate their years of service. And after they get to thirty, we celebrate them every year. So, Amy, Amy said, you don't really need to do this every year. I'm like, oh, yes, we do. If you're after thirty years in Dover, in Dover, you deserve to be celebrated. So, that's exciting. And we finish at about eleven-thirty. So, please, if you are free, come on in. Refreshments start about seven-thirty. Sit up front with us, that would be great. It really is a really great day. The second update I want to give you is class size update. I don't know who is advertising Dover, but we are really getting tons and tons of enrollment. So, I think last month I told you Weigeltstown First Grade really went over the class size policy. So, we did add a fourth first grade at Weigeltstown that was budgeted for. We did, we knew we had an extra teacher, so that worked out great. Well, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, Live Fifth Grade just went pop. So, right now, as of today, they are at twenty-nine students per class in fifth grade. So, and we have one more registering this week. And we have thirty on a waiting list. And we have approximately twelve students who have enrolled in Grade Five Live in the last two months. So, we are going to put a long-term sub in there for the remainder of the, for this coming school year. That class size is just too big. And we'll bring that to you next month for your approval. We'll put a sub in there for now until you approve that. And this particular class has a lot of needs. So, we knew we needed to do that. So, any questions about that class size? We'll really keep a close eye on that.
What did you mean by a waiting list? When you say that there are some that are on a waiting list, what's that mean?
They have thirty people they have scheduled yet to enroll before school starts, thirty families.
They're just putting their application.
They're just putting their application. Tomorrow's Wednesday, school starts Monday.
We don't, we don't have the capability to put them on a waiting list and not accept them.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no. When we, no, 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 no. No, honestly, I did go into Brad today and say, all right, Brad, you got to shut down enrollment. We can't do this. He's like, okay. But then we decided on the next teacher and I went in and said, you can open enrollment again, we'll put them in fifth grade.
You can wait in a list when somebody backs out.
Yeah, no, we just, they are enrolling all day, every day. And we still have thirty kids to get to. So, they are moving as fast as they can. Poor Marcia was here tonight till five. So, yeah, it's just, it's something, really, and, yeah.
These thirty, do we know which buildings are going to be affected? Stay in.
They're almost all elementary.
One building or spread across all of them?
Mostly live.
And I do want to share, yeah, yeah, seriously. But I want to share you Christina's comment today was, you know, if we were realigned, we could move some people because we, I did consider that. I went, I went, yeah, yeah. And now, I will say, they're not a ton smaller. So, when we looked at, okay, what if I could take five from Live and put them somewhere else? It made the other building high. So, it's just really interesting that they're just really high class sizes right now, so.
Do we have any other classes that we are concerned about that are getting there?
No, we're good. I say that now. We'll see what next month brings. I say that today. But, no, we actually went through K to four, we feel really good with. But, yeah, five and six, yeah, we feel real good right now unless something happens. And I want to remind you, the one housing development that is in Weigeltstown?
Originally.
Originally, that's supposed to be in Weigeltstown, is going to North Salem. So, as soon as they open their doors, which Mr. Savanovic, I think you talked about earlier, they are going to North Salem. So, we just, just, yeah, he knows about it. Yeah, 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 so, it's crazy. Okay, and then finally, one of the things I'd like to share with you, some information. If you think back to budget times, you'll remember that the very last budget proposal you had, Mrs. Banjo had to add two hundred thousand dollars to the budget because of our cyber school costs. Well, we knew that we were going to, I think we shared with you that night, we were going to tackle this in many different ways. So, we started the tackling this summer by requiring all parents who send their kids to outside cyber schools to provide us proof of residency in Dover. Okay, a number of districts do that. And we thought, this will help us kind of get a handle on those outside cyber people. Well, that was very, that was very, very successful. And from. Well, that was very, that was very, very successful, and from now, we still have to hear from a number of them, but in contacting parents, first, I have to give kudos to Smitta Weakland. She re-enrolled six IS high school students back from outside cyber schools to come into our cyber school, which, by the way, is already paid for, our cyber school's paid for, for a savings of $82,000. And I want to remind you of these costs, for a regular ed student, a yearly tuition to cyber, for cyber schools, $11,500. A special ed student is $26,000, so, per year, so that was for a year, savings of 82. So, Smitta has done a great job, she's all excited, she has two more, she thinks are coming back next week. So, that's great. And then, in, in, with Brad and Marcia, another 11 have just re-enrolled back in the district, just in calling to say, "Hey, we need you to come in and give us proof of residency." They're like, "Well, you know, I was thinking about coming back anyway." 11 have come back, have re-enrolled into the district for savings of $141,000. So, we're happy with that, so hopefully, we'll kind of do a lot more work with that. And we have other ideas, too, we know, we, we have a cyber program that is, okay, we know it's okay. We know we need to do better with it, so, and we do not have an elementary cyber program, and we are piloting one this year. I mean, no one likes the idea of kindergarteners going to cyber, but we have kindergarteners going to cyber in Dover. So, why not let us be the ones to do it? So, that, I thought, is kind of exciting, and that's off the top of my head.
Tracy, do we have a sense of why those people went to cyber in the first place?
We are going to tackle that, to try and get a sense from them, but we don't, we don't. We, we wanted to start, as soon as, as soon as when we were doing budget in the spring, we were like, "All right, how do we get money quick?" You know, how do we, how do we do the low-hanging fruit, and we did that, but we definitely want to do that. We want to have surveys with them, you know, we want to be, Smitta is working so hard with this. We want to be very intentional when they do walk out the door, why they are, and I think you've saved, you have saved a couple. Couple of kids have made a comment that they wanted to do this, and she has brought them in and talked to them to find out why, and worked it out with them. So, I think we are definitely going to do that, we want to know why they're leaving. You know, a lot of times, sometimes it's religious reasons, and you have to, you know, you have to understand that, but that isn't most of the cases, so.
Well, and I would, I would hope that, you know, that we would also pay attention to the why, so that we can put resources in place if they need extra emotional support, or extra academic support, or whatever it is that they need, so that we can keep them here.
And honestly, at the high school, they really worked very hard this summer on putting supports in place for kids. And with Kirsten, Kirsten works really hard, so I feel real good, we actually have the things, we just have to identify the kids before they go out the door, and we kind, that was just, they were just walking out the door. And remember, you could have somebody move here and go right to cyber school, we don't even know them, we don't even know them. So, doing the residency, again, I'm not sure if we've had a huge turnout, but it's been enough, and we are going to keep that. We are going to keep going with that. We want, because it's very possible, we have someone who moved from Dover two years ago, and Dover's still getting billed for them being in a cyber school, if they never told the cyber school, they would still be billing us. So, we want to make sure that stuff doesn't happen, and get all that cleaned up, but, yeah. This is going to take us a couple of years to kind of get, get running and working. But we were, I was tickled, and I said, "Hey, let's do some numbers for the board meeting." And Smitta Man was all over, she's like, "I got another one," you know, she was like, she was so excited to tell me that she's saving this one and that one. And Brad, they're just keeping tallies on the board, but, Marcia gets up, she goes, "That's another one." Yeah, so, they're doing a great job. So, again, going back out to shout-out to everyone who worked so hard this summer. It was a great summer, we are so ready for the school year, I feel good, I think everyone feels good about the year, so it's going to be a terrific year. Any questions?
I have a comment you said about the students, I thought about that on Sunday when I read the Sunday paper of all the transfers of property in Dover Town, Dover School District, it was a long list.
It is. Well, and you heard Mr. Savanovich, we, we are seeing it, we're seeing them, all these houses that are getting built. It is, yep.
Thank you. Moving along, miscellaneous, any, anything from any board members?
Just wanted to comment about the newsletter that went out. We received some favorable comments about that, and sharing with you, you've received some favorable comments. It's great to see a connection with our community, to bring everybody up to speed with, you know, what's going on here. Still, in spite of our efforts, in spite of the resources, there's still a lot of people that don't necessarily know the ins and outs that's going on. So, thank you for all the hard work that was put into that and making that connection.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Moving along, this will be our second public comment period. If anybody has anything for either one of off the agenda, please come forward. Seeing no one, just some future meeting announcements. August 15th, this Thursday, will be our board committees and our planning meeting. And then, September 17th, 2019, will be our next regular board meeting. With that, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. First, and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, we're adjourned.